Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order here for the City of Erie Land Bank meeting for June 20th, 2022. Like to start off by seeking approval of the consent agenda and approval of the minutes of our May 16th, 2022 meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to our finance report today. Mindy, you're gonna go over the numbers for us.
April.
Okay, April.
Okay, nothing new to report as far as the finances go. We do have the balance sheet and the profit and loss statement in there. Um, we did have the Erie Land Bank audit that we need acceptance on in order for us to proceed with that. I think that was all I had.
I did have one question, maybe we can note moving forward. I've noticed each month we'll get a P and L that sometimes reflects the current month and then sometimes is a rolling number for year-to-date.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would we be able to just have that be year-to-date each month?
Yes.
Because it's hard to reconcile. I have to go back to prior months to figure out the trends.
Right.
Um, so moving forward, that if the P and L could be a year-to-date.
Yes.
Um, and then I also wanted to just to ask about the expense that we have under grants and charity, the $10,000. Um, and if you don't know that what that is today, that's fine, but the $10,000 that we're expensing, is that quarterly or what is that tied to?
That is something I would have to look into and get back to you. I'm not sure why that would be on there.
Okay, maybe we can follow up on that next meeting then. Thank you. Do we have any questions on the financials? All in favor accepting financial report?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to citizens' comments. Were there any citizens that have reached out to comment today?
No.
Called in or anything? No? Okay. All right, let's move on to the report of the executive director and I think, Mindy, I'm not sure if Aaron's on the line, but if... If he is, let's let him in.
It does not appear so, so.
Okay.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Um, so as far as the work plan 2021 is concerned, most of the properties are under contract for demolition, are down, um, or will be approved in the coming weeks, so we're moving forward with that. There still are three properties that are being appealed in the Commonwealth Court, so. Um, and then 1958 Prospect, we put out for rehab proposals. We added that to the other properties that were out for rehab proposals. Uh, work plan 2022, nine demo bids on the agenda and then four from last month will be demolished. The remaining properties are being evaluated for possible rehab proposals. The ones currently out for proposals include Fairmont, Woodlawn, um, East Sixth Street, Warful, and Kellogg. Uh, additional properties will be demolished if there aren't, if the rehab isn't favorable. Um, and then just things in general, we are working on an agreement with Serve Erie to utilize some of the remaining NAP money for demolition of properties within their area. Um, they have $27,000 remaining, which will cover roughly five demolitions, so. And then the Redevelopment Authority Board has appointed Chuck Scalise to the Erie Land Bank Board.
Could you repeat that?
The, the Redevelopment Authority Board appointed Chuck Scalise to the Erie Land Bank Board.
So the three that are out for rehab proposals, we should see those next month then?
There are actually five out for rehab proposals, so there's 41 Kellogg. We did not receive anything on those. They were due last week. Um, Warful, I received one on, however, it was incomplete, so we extended that with the others for the remaining deadline, which is July 13th, so the other ones we will see next month.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
How has the response been on? I know at the last meeting, we discussed, for example, Woodlawn, whether we would rehab ourselves or put it out, and the discussion at that time was to see where it was, where the market and interest was. Can you just give us a summary of how that's been?
Yes, so we have had a huge influx of interest in, um, several of the properties. I would say, um, four definitely have a ton of interest. Woodlawn, Fairmont, Prospect, and East Sixth Street all have a significant amount of interest, um, in them for rehab proposals, so. Um, Woodlawn was one that was due for proposals last week, however, we decided to extend it, um, because of all of the interest. I am actually scheduled to show several of the properties tomorrow to new people that were qualified, so. We did create the pre-application process in order to vet people before we take them out to show them the houses, so. Um, everyone that has been going out has either done these types of projects or has the means and know-how to do them, so.
For my own clarity then, so after the pre-application is complete, that's when you're taking them and showing the property? So you're vetting with the pre-app and then anyone who meets the qualifications, you're showing the properties to each of them? I would imagine that's quite a bit of time for you.
It is, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So since we've had, uh, a lot of interest, which is good, we're getting that kind of activity. Are we gonna send out a notice to all interested parties to come back to the highest and best? So that everyone feels comfortable?
Yes, I do plan on sending an email. I have been creating basically, uh, just a contact list of who has been interested. Um, I will send them out a reminder to bring their highest and best. One of the things that I did do with the applications is I added an escalation clause. Um, basically what the escalation clause says is, um, here's my bottom offer, but and here's the top price I would be willing to pay. Um, and then they decide how much those increments would go out, so basically there, it, it's a system that allows them to overbid somebody else's bid, um, up to their highest amount that they'd be willing to spend on a property, so. But I will be notifying everybody. I just plan on sending out a reminder of when they are due and that we do have multiple offers for some of the properties and to bring their highest and best, so.
Too much problem to have.
Yes.
I want to try to avoid any issues or allegations, um, so, um, hopefully we can wrap up some of this.
Yeah. He did email me his report, um, so, uh, just a few things on here. Um, he did discuss and finalize the developer's agreement with Mr. Snippert, so that is the agreement that we will go into whenever we approve these rehab proposals, so. Um, we made some changes to them, knowing that, uh, what successes and what failures we've had in the past to try and overcome those types of things, so. Um, he said they're finalizing the complaint and quiet title for the 2021 properties and he will follow up at the next board meeting.
I wanted to bring something up. Uh, well, you know, I know we're tied at the hip with the Redevelopment Authority. I remember prior to, uh, the formation of the Erie Land Bank, Redevelopment Authority in the city had undertaken, uh, what I call a sale of lots that were, uh, basically owned by the Redevelopment Authority. However, they could no longer afford to maintain it, so those lots were sold, uh, to, uh, individuals who had presented plans for development or use of those properties. And I just want to bring it to this group's attention and Redevelopment Authority that, that some of those sales and use of those lots are not living up to what the original intent and purpose, uh, that they said they were to be used for. And I'll give you an example. If you, um, talking on the corner, southeast corner of 22nd and French. And across the street from there on the north side, there's another lot she purchased. And I think she also has a lot that's adjacent and adjoining to that, uh, over on 21st Street that's on the south side. Uh, she has abandoned those lots. They're not being used. We look at, uh, structural sites that become useless and, uh, blight, and that's what these lots are. And I'm just giving you three for an example, uh, because no one's there, no one's maintaining it. The other pro- uh, problem with that is that it's throughout the, uh, uh, really what I see on the east side. You know, with this tall grass, high grass, weeds, people aren't maintaining these lots and at some point, we need to take a look at that and have, uh, and, and I think we call it a recovery or retrieval, where the Redevelopment Authority and/or Land Bank can take back those lots and units if they're not being used for the purpose that they said. And for those current properties that are problem properties, if we could get a city code, uh, inspection of those lots and if possible, have them condemn, uh, condemn. Uh, because the owners aren't doing anything and it's, it's, it just looks terrible and it's throughout. If you go anywhere between 18th, uh, to 24th, 25th, state over to East Avenue, you'll see them, you know. Grass is taller than my five-year-old. That's it. Five-year-old grandson.
Yeah, I think you raised a good point because, you know, we're gonna probably see some offers coming next month. You talked about having that additional escrow set aside. And you know that'll be part of packages coming in with that refundable escrow to make sure the products are completed. Hopefully that's part of the package next month.
We did not have the escrow for the vacant lots. However, one of the things that we are working with a solicitor on is adding in a recapture, um, portion to the agreement, basically stating that if they are not keeping up with the property, and in this case vacant land, if they are not keeping it in a suitable condition, then we have the right to take it back. Um, because of those problems that we've seen where people aren't keeping up with the property, so we are adding that into the vacant lot sales agreement.
And though we also want to see monetary amount of help to the stockholders. We've run this a couple of months in a row and I think we need to get another conversation for some, or we'd like to see some sort of monetary amount of help that we refunded in the project or that we have rehab focused on.
We are doing that for the rehab. We didn't do it for the vacant lots. We just added the recapture portion to the vacant lots because essentially those are being sold to the adjacent property owner.
Should we look at, maybe it's a lesser amount, or should we look at some dollar amount to help that with the lots as well? You know, see, see how, what are the state of those lots even later, maybe get that small amount back. We can have that follow-up, but.
Yeah, I can, we can definitely look into that.
I think we need to look at rehab, say it's a vacant lot, maybe it's a lesser amount, or should be something that we can offset the expense of going out, having a brush-off or whatever we have to make it back.
Right. Yeah, we can look into that for sure.
I make a motion that we select Daria as board secretary.
Secretary.
I feel like the fix was in before I walked in today. That's... That's, I, I'll need a little bit of training, but that's fine. Happy to take that on. I see that.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Be more careful from now on.
Uh, okay, moving on to 21.5.
We did ask, um, if there was going to be a representative from that firm coming today. It looks like they were not able to make it, um, to help answer any questions that you might have about that. So I can always follow up with them and get answers back to you if you have any questions, but, um, they were finished with the Erie Land Bank audit and we just had to present this for your acceptance.
I do have a question. On the, um, statement of revenues and expenditures, it looks like our expenditures are over by $3,395, um, compared to what our revenues are. I guess I'm just wondering how are we, uh, rectifying that? It's on page eight.
I would have to look into greater detail to see what those expenditures were, um, but I can get an answer back to you for the next board meeting.
Okay, I'm rushing to accept the audit, uh, with the question.
Ask that again.
Okay, we'll tap in 21.5. You got a follow-up question?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That takes us to, uh, authorizations.
Yes, so there is a bank authorization. Um, this is needed to allow April to work, um, or to be the administered depositor for the Erie Land Bank. So long.
Sir.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to demo papers.
Yes, so we've been busy. We have nine properties for approval for the demolition bids. The bid tabulations, um, were included in the packets. Did you want me to go through each individually or did you just want to look at them?
So for the property at 1268 East 21st Street, has that demolition been completed?
No, none of these have been completed.
Okay, because then, um, over where residents are requesting to buy proposal for purchase of vacant residential property, uh, there is a 1268 that is listed
Correct.
In the proposal package.
So in the mission to stay ahead of, uh, the game, so to speak, and to try and get ownership of these vacant lots prior to people enjoying them without owning them, um, I have been sending out letters to all vacant lot owners. So any lot that touches one of the lots that we are taking a house down on, they received a letter. We've been giving it 30 days at least. Um, so the ones that you do have in front of you went out at least 30 days ago, um, asking them if they would like to purchase the vacant lot once the house has been demolished, so. Um, again, we decided to do that so that we are, um, not allowing people to enjoy the properties without owning them, so. Yep. Yes.
All in.
Yes, yes.
Would you want us to, all of us collect a letter?
Yes, that would be great if we can, um, again, we had multiple offers or bids in for all of the properties and we did go with the lowest bidder.
I'll make, I'll make that motion. I'll make, I'll make that motion to approve the demolition bids as presented. Aye.
Thank you. Yes, so you will see in front of you a sheet that goes over vacant lot proposals. So as I mentioned, we did send out letters to any adjoining property owners. And then there are also some other ones in here that we had received that weren't adjoining, but just that people had put a proposal in for. I did do some vetting of them to see if they had passed through taxes, if they had any utility liens, and if they were in ownership of any other blighted properties. Again, to try and mitigate selling off these properties to people that aren't going to take care of them. So you will see, there's only one for the first two properties on the list. They both want to use it as a side yard. The one, or 1135 East 10th Street, offer is 700. I guess we'll go through individually and then ask for your approval or so. But again, they didn't have any outstanding issues that we saw in order to deny them permission to purchase the property.
So 1268 East 21st, you have two proposals.
We have two proposals for that. That is correct. They are both side lot owners?
And Mr. Tate lives at the property.
But with that property, unfortunately Jesse Tate does have past due taxes that came up in 2020 and 2021. They both showed up on the registry.
Was he made aware that you would be reviewing like the tax log just to make sure that?
Yes. Yes, everyone that has come forward that has had interest in the vacant lots or the rehab program, we have explained that we are vetting people more now to make sure that they're essentially a good citizen and don't have any past due taxes, utility liens, things like that.
Is that information also included in that proactive letter that you were sending out?
I would have to review that to see.
I just think it'd be helpful for people to know even before they apply, no matter what circumstances, that we'll be checking so that they could clear it up if they needed to in advance.
No, that's a great idea. I will check. If it's not, I will definitely put it in there. It does say in there, the undersized parties have no delinquent taxes, water, sewer, refuse bills due to the city of Erie or its agents, so. Yeah, so, yeah, if we could just go through individually and then decide on the ones that do have multiple.
Make that motion. This is for 1135 East 10th, correct? Mr. Ornica, make that motion. Aye.
Seeing no issues, if there are any questions, maybe the motion can approve.
Second. Aye.
1268 East 21st. So I'll just jump in. All things being equal, obviously, if somebody is still going on taxes on another parcel, we're not going to prioritize that, so. Maybe it's a matter of approving Ms. Fuller's application. You need an officer to approve.
Yes, sir.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
614 and 616 lots.
Is there a property on this lot right here?
Currently, yes.
Will the person that's standing want to restore the home to its former view?
Yes, I did talk to her.
I did speak with her. She was hoping to restore the home and I told her that it's she does own adjoining property, but she does not live locally, but she rents it out. So she said she would like it to have to add to the yard for her, the property that she owns. She was hoping to be able to rehab the house, but from my understanding, it's too far gone to be able to do that. So she wanted to keep her offer as it was.
So just to clarify then, that the applicant living in Tennessee is not living in Erie, is that correct? They own the property, but they're not living in the city of Erie?
Correct. This one.
So when we have investors, when we have investors reach out to us, we're scanning all the properties, making sure it's not.
Yes, and yes. Yes.
So the neighbors that live in Florida.
They do not live in the city either, but they do have a lot of properties that are in the city that they rent out and they are all up to date with their taxes, their utilities, and none of them are on the blighted list.
So is the Drake applicant now looking to make it just a side lot in the green space?
Yes, for the property that she owns and rents out.
So the escalator is up 2,000 on this?
Yes, she wanted it to 1,000. The original offer of 10,000 was because she thought she could buy the house.
So they're both landlords?
Yes.
And both have an jointed property?
Yes.
One suit on each side of it?
Yes.
One lives in Erie, I don't know who lives in Tennessee. I guess my concern would be that since it's going to be a green space, how's that personal thing in that green space?
I would just say that of all things, we need to both landlords. I would rather have somebody local or have go make sure it's green. I don't know how to break the tie on this one.
Right. Fresh off my, uh No, I was just gonna say fresh off the vacant and delinquent property webinar that I did last week. They did say always to try to keep it in the community, so I was in agreement. If we're allowed to do that, that makes more sense to me.
Makes sense to me.
Yep. There you go.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
This person is a landlord as well. They own an adjoining property, but they rent it out. But they do have lots of properties in their portfolio and none of them are on the blighted list or delinquent. And they're in Edinburgh.
I move to accept the application by Blintz, Blintzlear Apartments for 927 West Third.
Accept.
All favor.
Aye.
Oh, we have 5225 Wayne, sorry. If your list is from when we met, it was an addition that came in after we met, so.
I just have lots of questions about this if we could. So obviously Frontier Lumber's bid is much higher than the other. And, you know, a picnic pavilion with basketball hoop sounds lovely. Did they provide proof that they could do that? And then how would it be up, kept up so it didn't become some sort of nuisance as well?
They did not provide that. This was, this was the one that came in last minute. He did provide, they did have an architect do drawings of what they'd like to put in. When talking to the gentleman from Frontier Lumber, they just, they are right there and they wanted to do something nice for their community and use that space, so. He does plan on keeping it up. And I guess there is, because one of the things we questioned is there is a railroad track that, right there, but I guess since Erie Coke Plant has closed, it's not a railroad track that's used.
So that lot wouldn't be fenced. It would just be public and open and
So this is near where they replaced the stormer off and collapsed. This is the same lot, the same property.
I'm not 100% sure about that. And again, that would fall back to the maintenance agreement as well with the contract that we would be drawing up with them is that they are going to maintain it and keep it in a nice condition.
Is there more information on the small playground than England did?
No.
I just, I guess, I've met with the business owner for different issues, I've been doing it for years. You have someone there who's made a deliberate decision to say that they want to invest in that area.
Right.
When a lot of other folks aren't willing to do that.
Yes.
So I think just given this track record, if you're willing, this desire to continue to invest in the city. I don't know if I necessarily can see any detail of this yet.
I agree.
It's also a much higher sale price, so, yeah. I'll make that motion to approve the bid put in by Frontier Lumber for 525 Wayne. Aye.
Sure. We actually ended up removing that from our agenda because the 41 Kellogg did not receive any rehab proposals. And after being in it now, I would recommend demolition. And as I mentioned, Warful, I did get one rehab proposal in, but it was incomplete. So I reached back out to that developer and asked him to go back to the proposal and complete it as we ask and have just extended the deadline for Warful to the July 13th date with all the others. Uh, no problem, yeah, no problem.
Second. Thank you.